Thank everyone. I want to thank everyone for joining us for our regularly, well, not regularly scheduled monthly board meeting. It was originally scheduled for a week ago. Today is Monday, June 21st, and at this time, I'll ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic where it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So tonight, we're joined with our fellow trustees. My name is Matthew Weiss, and we have Alice Joslow with us, and we have Amanda Curly, and Shandee Speller, and Elthema Goodson. And joining us from the library staff is Karen Rockoffels, and Kathy Byrne, and Mallory Molinari, and Molly Robbins has just joined us. Hello, Molly.
Hello.
Joining us from the Friends of the Austin Library is Dennis Newberger, the acting president, as well as members of the Village of Austin, Karen Dettori, Stuart Cahan. At this time, I also want to thank our WLS rep, Jonathan Marshall, who's been joining us with great regularity, and we appreciate your diligence and the attention you're giving us. I hope I didn't miss anyone. I don't think I did. And hopefully, Lucinda and Cecilia can join us soon. I'll shoot them an email in a minute or two to see if they can make it. We will adjust the agenda a little bit as we go. I'm going to first ask Dennis of the Friends to speak, and then we'll go into what we call Old Business regarding the Village Water Properties, and we'll take the rest from there. So Dennis, at this time, if you're perhaps ready, we're interested in what's going on with the Friends.
Hello, everyone. I'll make it brief. Right now, in our checking our financial status and our checking, we have $26,698 savings, with $7,701. We are waiting to pay for the new carpet and the theater, the good enough painting restoration, items for the teen room, and the new outdoor table set. And as soon as we get those invoices, we will pay them. Upcoming events, we had, we met for the first time in the 5,000 room, which was good, last Tuesday, and we're going to start mapping out what we'd like to do, depending on what, you know, is available at the library and what restrictions, you know, due to the COVID we may have. Year-to-date homebound and organization activity, Sunshine Children's Home now is starting to accept children DVDs. I dropped off about eight DVDs this afternoon, and the American Legion has, and desperately need, family DVDs to be sent out to the troops here in the US and overseas. The Peace Corps is on hold, and the only nursing home activity is with Betty Norton. We have, Molly, I think it's, is it still four applicants will be awarded the scholarships this month?
So far, I've only heard from three. There's been no feedback from the fourth, so I would go with three.
Okay, fine. And again, I will, one will definitely come donating in memory of Eileen because of how good the library was when she was going through a difficult medical time. The other good thing is the coin drop. There's a box at the book checkout, and it's available, and it's given out to children whose parents may not have coins, or in some cases, there's been groups where it's been teachers, and again, they may not have the coins, so we will keep restoring that, so the coins can be given to the children to be used at the coin drop. And that's basically what is going on. The, I did forward to Kathy the up-to-date report on the activity, and hopefully, that'll, you know, start increasing. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but Dennis, that theater looks absolutely terrific with that new carpet. Molly, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you to the Friends so much. It's, it made a huge, huge difference, and it was lovely to see all of you last Tuesday.
It was. It really was. And we'll be there tomorrow.
Yeah, see you then.
Of the Friends and of the vendor, like, you know, installing, that we can just sort of use to say, like, thank you?
I'm sorry.
I missed the first part.
Do we have any photos of, like, the Friends and, you know, the carpet going in and stuff like that, so we can thank them on social media?
We can probably get that tomorrow, a photo.
Thank you. Read your report, Matt.
All right. I just don't want to miss opportunities, but going forward, we, I know we can always do better.
Well, she'll do it tomorrow. People will be there.
Thanks again, Dennis.
Thank you.
So on the, the next item on the agenda is a little bit out of order. We'll move to what we refer to as Old Business. And we had something of a prolonged effort to accommodate the taxation efforts of the village regarding water properties, and it actually spanned almost two, two years of board meetings. And ultimately, the library's vote wasn't considered to be germane to this effort. So really, because the village staff and the library trustees don't work that often very closely, I thought we could take some minutes tonight, and in a setting that we don't have any, any business to decide, or any decisions to make, or any deadlines, just to ask how it is we got to that point, if there's anything we could do differently. I had a couple of questions. For instance, we, when the village came to the board meetings and it gave us the presentations on both events, the trustees really didn't grasp what this, the impact of the decision was, nor did we really understand the decision-making process. And we, we certainly accepted with open arms and a very friendly atmosphere that we're responsible for having to do something here. And the tenor really changed when we got a letter from the corporate counsel. Because in my short experience with legal matters, I find that my friends tell me when they need something or they don't like something. And my adversaries have their attorney write me a letter. So that's really what prompted my effort to get you, get the, what I call the village people here. And Karen Dettori, if I can, I'd like to turn the floor over to you and ask you to jump in and reframe and rephrase what I've said, perhaps.
Well, thank you so much for having Stuart and myself here tonight. It was indeed a long and complicated process, and at the onset, you know, we have, we were looking at three taxing entities: the town of Austin, the school district, and the library district. And this was a conversation that was iterative with the town, with the tax assessor, with, internally, for a long time. The, the basic issue was that we tax ourselves on our water treatment plants. So because we have a very unique situation where our water treatment properties are owned by the village, but located in the town of Austin, they're subject to property, or they were subject to property tax. And, and, you know, that's been true for many, 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 many years. But the challenge was twofold. Water rates are paid by town and village residents, and they're, they're regressive in the sense that regardless of your income or where you live, you're, you're charged a water rate. So it's different, it's different than a property tax, which is based on the value of your property. And, and your water rate is what pays for all improvements to the water system. And as we're looking, so that doesn't come out of your property tax dollars. It doesn't come out, it comes out of the water fund, which is then funded by water rate payers and the rate that you pay. So we realized this was problematic, because basically, you're paying more money because we're taxing property that's owned, that benefits both town and village residents. So your water rate is higher if we're taxing those properties, whether you live in the town or the village. So it seems a little bit, now, there are some people in, so the taxing entities, the school district, though, encompasses more than just the town and village. So we did a very thorough analysis, and I think this is where it starts getting confusing, on what the impact is. And so there was some impact to people who are not rate payers because they live in Newcastle, or because they're on well water. But that, that difference was negligible when you compare that to the impact on the majority of people in the taxing entity, that in the tax districts that were paying this water rate. When we, we also realized that we are going to be doing, you know, we have a major, major capital improvement on the water treatment plant that's necessitated because the plant has not been substantially revitalized or, or hasn't had substantial upgrades to it in terms of water processing in about 35 years. So technology changes, issues change. We, we're also meeting peak capacity, we're, we're exceeding peak capacity demands in the hottest days of the summer. So this is not something that we chose as a project we'd like to do. This is a have-to-do, and it is required by the Department of Health that we do this. So this is something that the village has known for some time. We are getting closer to actually doing the job. The job's been postponed about a year due to COVID, but we will be, we have hired a construction management firm, and we will be bidding out this job, which will be subject to a permissive referendum for the bond in, in probably late December, early January. This is a sizable project that, that is upwards of $40 million. And now, we're a bit concerned because now with construction costs and everything else being so high, we're really hoping to keep it as manageable as possible. But the impact of that improvement on the property values really takes a tax bill that was two years ago about $150,000, and raises that tax bill by 2024, 2025, when the, when the building's complete to one point, I believe it's $1.8 million. To fund the taxes, just the taxes, would have to be funded through water rate payers. So when we did the analysis of what the property tax benefit would be, because there would be a property tax benefit, because the property is more valuable, but there would also be an impact on the water rate that would need to be charged to cover the debt on the bond service. When we did that analysis, essentially, the average home would, if we were to not exempt taxes, you'd see a slight benefit of $30 to $50 for the average home on their annual tax bill. But their water rate would increase by $400. So when you're looking at the money at home, most of us don't have a property tax fund and a, and a water fund. We're paying it all out of our own fund. So it didn't seem like that really made a lot of sense. When we looked at to the impact on non-rate payers, the impact was similarly fairly negligible compared to the, the overall impact that the water rates would have for the majority of people in the Village of Austin and in the Town of Austin.
Karen, we, that, that's largely the way we understood it. What I'm curious about is how the library was deemed to be a participant, and then somewhere along the line, that wasn't the case.
So in our efforts, you know, best laid plans of, of a new project, and something that none of us were particularly familiar with, and there wasn't a lot of experience, this is an atypical situation, we had been working under the assumption, and sometimes even in the best of circumstances, when you have people on the table, that the library would need to be considered and would need to approve this because there is a library tax. Sometimes, when you're dealing with large groups of people who work with different perspectives and different things, it's hard to keep those chains of communication. You may think everybody's looped in, but when people finally pay attention, it wasn't until the, the school board decided to exempt the property for the next tax, tax year, that the assessor said, oh, by the way, we can't separate a vote from the lot, like, a separate a library vote from the school board vote because it's all issued under the same warrant. That was not something that we were aware of. So when that happened, I, I did put in calls to people, but we also had to get that information out. And I do understand that most of us, Stuart, no offense, really like to get letters from lawyers, but we also deal in a municipality where we have to make sure information's communicated. And because we do that, sometimes our, our burden to be conservative on how we communicate this is just higher than it would be if we were dealing as friends. And although I think of the library as a friend, and all of you as people in the community as friends, we don't always have that luxury. And, and depending on when I was able to, I did try to reach out to Matt Yu and Karen as soon as I found out it was just a, you know, matter of circumstance, and, and we really had, it was incumbent on us to get that information out. So that is why the letter came as well. However, the letter is, is merely to inform, and we have an obligation to do that in, you know, we, we have to be conservative. Just talking to people sometimes doesn't work in government. So we do apologize for the fact that we put you through that. However, in talking about how we would have done it differently, we still would have wanted input from the library board. We still see you as a partner, and we would want you engaged. So I think that you would have had same presentations, that we would have kept you informed the same. We would have alerted you, though, that ultimately it would be the school board who would be dictating the exemption. And that really was an oversight that, that neither Stuart nor I understood till after the fact, when the assessor said, oh, by the way, I think maybe it was always assumed, in a sense, that, that somehow the votes would be unanimous amongst the taxing entity, which maybe wasn't a good thing to assume by the assessor, you know. But the reality is, when we said, well, you know, the, the library, the school board approved this, but the library board didn't, there's no legal way that the assessor can disaggregate those two. And that just was something that came up when it became a reality. And it wasn't, you know, sometimes that's how it goes when you're trying to keep everybody informed, and you maybe don't have all the information that you need. And this was a very complicated issue that we worked very hard, many, many hours went into it at the staff level, and we believe it was the right thing to do for Austin and, and for the water rate payers, who are the majority of people in the school district, in the, in the tax district. So again, sometimes your best intentions is, is challenging.
No, I appreciate that. What I'd also like, if I can, is ask Stuart a question or two. I was wondering if this particular letter is limited in its scope, that it only applies to this event that has occurred, or this evaluation. I don't know what the right phrase is.
I'm hesitant to answer the question because I'm not your attorney, so I can simply tell you that I wrote this because it related to the water situation. And based upon both the tax law, real property tax law, and the opinion from the real property services, there is, I can say this, there is nothing in the opinions that I've read which would indicate that this is limited solely to a situation dealing with water taxes, but would likely relate to any potential exemption that would be voted on by the school district.
So given that consideration, I don't know if you can answer this, is it perhaps in the best interests of the library board of trustees, or for, refer all future communications written or otherwise through our attorney to make sure that we're dealing in an appropriate fashion?
I would, I, I think that's not a bad idea. That, that's, to be honest, initially, the school district was sort of asking me for an opinion, and ultimately, I said, I can't do that. So I don't think it's a bad idea, and they ultimately got their own attorneys involved. So I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea to, to, to do that. It's, as Karen pointed out, it's a fairly complicated and somewhat esoteric area, but to, to push it past your, your attorneys and get their opinion is, is a very good idea.
And to the extent that the letter was written to inform us that the, the actions of the library board will not change the opinion of the, the village, is, is that in, in some way, and is the intention to preclude the library or the library board of trustees from pursuing litigation should that arise down the road in this subject matter?
I was not, I, Matt, I'll answer it as a lawyer would answer it. I wrote it simply to advise that the vote that the school, that, that the library board took, in my opinion, and in the assessor's opinion, was effectively, while it was a vote, it was not a vote which would impact the determination to exempt the properties for one year. That's, that, that's the long and short of it. And as Karen pointed out, we all went into this thinking that we needed approval from three different entities. We'd already gotten the county's approval in years in the past. We thought we needed, you know, approvals from school district, town, and library board. Only after the, that was all done, did we learn from the assessor that the library board's approval, or in fact, consideration of this, was not required.
Fair enough. I didn't mean to dominate the conversation. Did any other attendees or board members have any questions or comments at this time?
I do, Matt. I, I, thank you. Karen, you said that for those who live outside of the town and the village and well owners, the amount of, that they are responsible to pay for these taxes is negligible. Yet, the principle of the thing really, I don't understand how you can impose taxes on persons who do not use those resources. That, I don't understand at all.
So there's a couple of different ways of looking at this. We're not imposing any taxes. We're exempting a property. So there's a real distinction there. So no one's imposing any taxes. A property, a municipal service is typically exempt. In this case, we have a very unusual circumstance. So there's two ways of looking at that. One can look at that as a burden, but the other way to look at it is that the reality is that, or, or another way to look at it is that, in a sense, because those properties weren't exempted, as they should have been as municipal entities, as they typically are, that the member, you know, people who aren't rate payers were essentially getting a benefit that was being subsidized by the rate payer. So conversely, water rate payers were basically supporting something that in any other situation would not have been a benefit to people who are not rate payers.
I, I'm sorry. I don't understand that at all, if that water isn't being used at all.
So it's, if, again, the water treatment plants are typically exempt as a municipal service. So there is also an argument that could be made. Again, it, it's not really for me, this is, this is something that we looked at in the, based on common practice for municipal services, water is an essential service. So no additional, what I would just say is no additional taxes are being imposed. Rather, a property was deemed to be exempt. And that then takes that property off the tax rolls, which, but that doesn't impose an additional tax. It may result in more taxes for some rate, for some non-rate payers, but it is not an additional tax being imposed on anybody.
Then what is being imposed?
Nothing is being imposed, other than we've decided to take a, a property, it was decided that a property that was on the tax rolls is now exempt, similar to how churches are exempt or nonprofits are exempt.
But the question, I think, is how are you making up the revenues that you've forsaken by taking the property off the tax roll?
So the, the revenues, so we haven't forsaken any revenues, because remember, like, the budgets are the bud, everybody, everybody's budget remains the same. It's just how it's divided amongst the, the taxable entities. So there are no revenues to make up. It's just that your distribution, because you're, you're, you're not necessarily losing a revenue, you're just dividing it. So if, when we, when a nonprofit buys a property in a municipality and it goes off the tax rolls, there is no mechanism to then redistribute what was taxable at one point. If I, if I'm, you know, it, it is just the nature of, of how we deal with non-exempt properties. That, and exempt property typically is because it has a majority public benefit. May not benefit everybody, but there is a majority public benefit.
It still doesn't make any sense to me. Sorry.
I don't think we have the, the resources here in this setting to really dig down into how the, the village, or municipality for that matter, determines how budgets are met, and where their revenues come from, and how they're directed and redirected. So I'm going to have to say, we dug down as far as we can. And Karen, really appreciate your time and your patience. Stuart Cahan, it's good to see you. I haven't seen you in a million years. And I hope everyone stays well. If any other questions before, I, I thank the, the village attendees for joining us. If there are no other questions or comments, thank you both, and hopefully, we'll see you again soon.
Thank you so much for having us both. We, we do want to keep an open line of communication and reduce confusion. And going forward, we'll work to, to do that better, and hope we, hopefully, we won't have something as complicated as this come before us next time. So thank you very much, everybody. We appreciate the library greatly.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the next item in the agenda, I'm actually going to backtrack to the route, the scheduled order of events. By the way, I did send an email out to Cecilia and to Lucinda, but I haven't had a response, so hopefully, they can still join us. At this time, I'd like to go to the approval of the prior meeting minutes. And if I'm not mistaken, there are two. The first one we have is the special meeting from Monday, June 7th, and the only person who did not attend is Lucinda, and the rest of us did attend. So were there any questions or comments on the, the meeting, the special meeting from the 7th? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept in a second. And we have Alice and Amanda. All those in favor of accepting the minutes from the June 7th meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections or extensions? There being none, it carries 6-0. The, the very next meeting, it was a regularly scheduled meeting.
It carries 5-0.
5-0? No, Cecilia's not here. Thank you. Thank you. I lost my place. The, that was the regular meeting from May 17th. And on May 17th, everyone was, was in attendance. So if anyone has to take a look at the May 17th minutes, please do so. Any questions at this time, we'll entertain them. Any comments? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to accept in second the May 17th meeting minutes. And we have Alice and for her motion, and we have Amanda for second. All those in favor of accepting those minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections or extensions? There being none, that carries by Uh, any objections or extensions? There being none, that carries by zero. We now can, uh, resume the, the meeting. I will ask if there's any public comment, and Jonathan Marshall, that would extend to you at this point in time. Anything you'd like to share with us?
Okay, thank you very much. Um, not, not really. I know we, uh, the IT, the IT, um, discussions for WLS, uh, as a board and, uh, vote and PLDA, um, uh, discussion, uh, have gone forward and, uh, finalizing the, um, second half of 2021 and now 2022. Costs and rates, I should say. Um, and looking, I guess the next would be, um, for 2023, uh, what the IT, um, both, uh, cost, but also more importantly, what the service will be, uh, for 2023. So there's, there's time for, there's, that's, there's time, now that will be, uh, that discussed and, uh, different things. So that will be progressing, um, and, uh, different changes. One thing that I wanted to just mention along with it, as important as IT is, there are a lot of other things that, uh, the WLS is doing, uh, in terms of, uh, of outreach. And there is a, uh, a sheet that we'll send to Karen to distribute to, uh, to the board members, uh, and give you a summary of the different outreach projects and programs that WLS does, which I think will be helpful to you, uh, for both markets and, uh, types of programs. Just so you, you know, some of the other things that we're doing, uh, beyond, you know, IT is, is crucial and important, but also, uh, vital, uh, to the, uh, uh, community and to the libraries, patrons, and to the, uh, to the, uh, population of Westchester are the outreach programs that WLS does. So we'll send that along to, uh, to Karen. So, thank you. And if there's any questions, please, you know, happy to, to answer them.
Say, Jonathan, I know there was a survey that, uh, WLS sent out to trustees. I was curious if there were results or surprises that would be shared with us?
That is being, I think will be, is being finalized and discussed, I believe, at our next, uh, board meeting, which, uh, the end of June.
Great. Thank you.
We thank you for your, yours and, and, and everyone else who participated in it.
Any additional questions or comments for Jonathan at this time? Thank you very much, Jonathan. Appreciate your input.
My pleasure. Thank you.
And, uh, move on. I would, oh, Lizzie Allen is not with us and we, I don't, I don't have anything for the foundation. I don't know if Karen or perhaps Mallory is there anything you'd like to bring to our attention about the foundation?
I can give a brief update on the foundation. Um, and Mallory, if I miss something, you can always wave your hand and, and fill us in. We've been plugging along. Uh, one of our big efforts right now is identifying potential new board members. We have, I think I, I said this at the last meeting, Pam Thornton has joined the board as treasurer. She is a chat, um, an Austin resident and the former director of the Chapel Quail Library. She's retired. So that's very exciting. And, um, we're working on reaching out to others to, um, to get a, a nice active board going. And I think we're headed in a, a great direction. Mallory, is there anything I'm missing? Okay.
We'll take that as a no. And, uh, um, Karen, I, I just wanted your input. Um, would you suggest we go to the long range plan at this time? And see if we want to bring Michael in and not let that wait too long?
Yeah, we can go ahead and do that. I'll text him right now. And it may, it may take him a moment or two to get on.
Okay.
I think that's them.
Hello, Michael.
There you are.
Okay, Karen?
Good evening.
We're all.
So I'll get us started. Um, we have finalized the template of the Long Range Strategic Plan, which we, uh, sent you, uh, prior to the meeting for you to look at. We would like to walk you through the plan tonight. I don't know how much detail you want us to go into. We, what we've been doing as we walk through the plan with folks who've sort of been along with us the, the whole way, is we've pointed out the highlights of the changes that have been made. Does that sound like a reasonable way to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, I wanted to share that Mallory has been very involved in this process too, for the last few months. And I'm going to have her, um, pull up the, the presentation of the, the template for us. And the template that you're looking at is the one that Michael has prepared for us. And that we've been working from and finalizing. And then I also shared with you earlier today, a very, very draft version of, um, of a document that we talked about putting together, which sort of adds some more narrative. It's more of a public facing document that adds some more narrative to the plan and sort of puts it into context for people. So that if we're not sitting here walking you through the plan like we are tonight, um, people could pick it up and, and, um, and read through it. But that's in its very beginning stages right now. Michael, did you want to, um, did you want to chime in before we get started?
Well, just, I'll, I'll remind the board of the context of the engagement. When we first engaged, the intent was to, uh, create a plan, uh, leveraging a committee, which we have been doing. We set a regular, uh, meeting schedule so that I would be meeting both with the committee and the leadership of the Austin Public Library, which we, we kept to that schedule. We suspended the committee work to get into the details of the plan. And that's what we've been doing over the last four weeks. And for, with many of you, we had a chance to share some of the details of that. I would note for the board, as we walk through, also understand that we've actually started executing parts of the plan. So as Karen and Molly and Mallory add to it, we actually have started executing some things and they'll, and if they don't point out particular things, I, I will. So I think in comparison to where we started and what was expected of the engagement, I think we've made good progress and we're just one month behind where we thought we would be in terms of presenting it to the board. But I think we're relatively on track. That's, that's what I would add.
Thanks, Michael. Um, the other thing I want to say is that we had initially intended as part of this process to pull in, um, community groups at this point, like towards the end of the project. But we found that we needed to really focus and do a lot more work with the staff, um, and with the committee at the end of the process. So we pivoted and, and did that, that work. And I think, you know, I, I just want to give a a shout out to Michael. One of the things that I've really appreciated about working with Michael is his flexibility to pivot in that way, where if, if we find that we need to do something a little different than we had originally planned, we do that different thing. And that's been really very helpful. Okay, um, are there any questions before I start walking us through the plan? All right. And like I said, I'm going to really focus on the changes to the plan that have come about within the, the, the later days of putting this together. I would encourage members of the committee to chime in, um, when you feel necessary, or if you feel it would be helpful. Um, I'm going to ask Molly and Mallory to walk through, um, some of the slides that we see and point out the changes. Uh, at any time as we're going along, if you want to stop me, please do so. But if you need to stop me, just sort of unmute yourself and shout out, because I can't see all of you on my screen right now. I can only see some of you. Okay, so you see the cover. This is our three-year strategic plan with a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Mallory, could you go to the next page? Mallory is sharing this for us. That as part of the plan, we did not change our library's mission and vision. So these are the library's mission and vision statements. They remain the same, and we feel very strongly about them. Could you go to the next slide, Mallory? And this is the, we, what we did do was come up with a strategic plan vision. Our strategic plan will continue to, continue the transformation of the Austin Public Library into the Center for the, for Community Engagement and Education, where all are welcomed and their needs are met at the shiny beacon of the hill. And we've been pretty firm about this, um, statement. We haven't changed this all too much throughout the process. Mallory, could you go to the next slide, please? Could you bring it all the way through? Thank you.
I feel like Van Ooyt.
Yeah. Uh, this has remained pretty much unchanged. We changed some wording in, in, uh, one of these pillars from, uh, neighboring communities to parts of Greater Austin in our SIS-CREE and Sustained Relations pillar. But for the most part, this has remained entirely unchanged. Um, and the, the, the image is to show our strong commitment as, um, being a foundation of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and everything sort of emanating from that. You can go to the next slide, Mallory. As you know, we were very intentional at the beginning of this plan about defining diversity, equity, and inclusion. This remains the same all the way through. We did not change any of these, and you've seen them before. And then we talk about why we have the DEI focus. One part did change in this section. We reworded the point where we said we want more people of color and those from underrepresented groups in Greater Austin to use our collections, programs, services, and facilities. We wanted to be really clear that we were looking at, um, both broad diversity and also a focus of people of color. We want it to be very clear in that point. Mallory, could you go to the next slide, please? We did our SWOT analysis, um, towards the, I don't want to say towards the end of the, um, the process, sort of in the middle of the process. Um, but we went ahead and put this at the beginning of the plan, so you can see it. I'm certainly not going to read through all of these, um, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. But these were, um, this was a very good process getting to this point. I think our, our committee did a lot of really good work identifying all of our, well, most of our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Some of the interesting things that, uh, we discovered was sometimes something is both a threat, uh, um, a strength and a weakness. Sometimes something's both a opportunity and a threat, but we had a lot of very good discussions. Are there any questions on anything so far before I move on to the next slide? Okay, Mallory, could you go on to the next one, please? This, um, has remained fundamentally unchanged. We have filled in some of the open questions. But what this talks about is it shows the various pillars again. And then the hypothesis that we had when talking about that pillar, um, and the drivers that, um, create that hypothesis. And then we talked about when we're looking at the goals of these pillars and, and the, the focuses of these pillars, how would we look to, um, doing this work? Who would be expected to do this work? How do we think we would do this work? Um, there's a, there are a lot of words on this page. The, the changes that we've made were some minor wording changes. And like I said, the addition of filling out the open questions to the right there. Any questions before we move on to the next slide? All right, Mallory. Okay, and I'm going to, um, ask to share, walking through the changes of some of these slides with Mallory and Molly. Molly, are you prepared to talk about the first slide here, the first foundational pillar? Mostly the changes?
I can.
Go.
There might be a little, there might be a little noise in the background. Um, shared financial accountability. Uh, many of the, um, basic facts remain the same. Some of the feedback that we got was, um, related to wording, uh, just some wording tweaks, and then some feedback from, uh, staff and the friends. I'm just looking quickly. I don't see any, it might be that I know it too well, but I don't see any really big changes.
This one stayed very much the same. Uh, the, the only changes on this slide really were just sort of wording.
Word and tweaks. I don't, I actually don't even have anything in my notes for this one. So I think we're pretty good, but we're happy to answer questions.
No questions.
All right, Mallory, we'll go on to the next one. And I think this next one is mine. The diversification of collections, programs, and services. Um, there were some pretty, I would say significant changes to this slide from the very start of when we talked about it to the very end. Although I would say that the, the focus and intention remained the same. For, we were very careful about, um, defining underrepresented, or, or talking about underrepresented communities. We wanted to make sure we were clear, especially in Goals One and Two. And, and there's a third goal, but it's on a following slide, especially in Goals One and Two, that we were trying to diversify our library programs and collections. Not just improving them, not just doing more of them, but diversifying them. One of the things that we really wanted to, that was a, a change that we really wanted to state in, um, Goals One and Two, was that we would start with an assessment of our current state. So that we, um, before we start saying, you know, we're going to add these kinds of programs, take away these kinds of collections or whatever it happened to be, we wanted to look at what we are currently doing. Um, and for collections, that would be a diversity audit, and the same for programs, um, to see where we are. We also added to Goal Number Two, um, expanding the library's Spanish language collection. Uh, we missed that, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't miss that going forward. Mallory, could you go on to the next slide? Um, this goal, or I'm sorry, this pillar continues on to, to this slide. And then for Goal Three, we did change this one fairly significantly. Um, Goal Three used to be just about technology, but we made it broader to incorporate all services. And, um, but we made sure that we kept technology as a big focus in our tactics and actions and our objectives, so that, um, we would be focusing on improving our technologies, but we also wanted to make sure that we were including, um, other services. And in particular, and this came out of the staff presentations that we did, that we make sure we include, um, specifying job readiness and social services referrals as a focus of what we look at for the next three years. Because those were very important things, and we certainly didn't want to miss it. And I will say, um, the, the staff feedback that came out of presenting, or that came, that, that was discussed around this pillar was very substantial and very good. We got a lot of good feedback from the staff when we talked about, um, the diversification of our collections, programs, and services.
So does this, this one replaces the physical and virtual infrastructure transformation?
No, that's coming up.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Any questions before we go on to the next pillar? Okay, Mallory, we're ready for the next one. Uh, this pillar talks about the diversi-, diversification and development of staff, board, and volunteers. And I have to say that this pillar uh generated a lot of discussion with the staff, a lot of really good discussion and feedback, which we ended up incorporating into um the plan. We wanted to be very clear um in Goal Number One as that as opportunities became available, especially at the management level, board positions and volunteer roles, that we were attracting, interviewing, and filling openings with diverse candidates who meet and exceed the qualifications. This created a lot of discussion with the staff and we wanted to be very clear about this goal. Um, and I'm, I'm really proud that we, that we, that we had the conversations that we had about this goal and that it, it's, I, I think, very well worded in our, in our plan. Um, we also, from the sta-, from staff input, made sure to add, let's see. Um, Mallory, can you go to the next slide, please? I think it might be on the next slide. Yeah, here we go. Um, there was a lot of talk amongst this, uh, when we talked amongst the staff about um the need for high-quality training, at cross-training especially, um, to support the staff in that, technology training. Um, and the need to really seriously make an effort to try to support more full-time or part-time plus positions. As you know, we're a very part-time, we have a lot of part-timers. And there was a sense from the staff that um the um career path, it, uh, a career path in our library, you know, they, there really needed to be a career path for people who might want a full-time job at the library. And so we should focus on that. Um, from those of us who manage people, there was also a feeling that um ha- having more full-time positions available at the library would lead to greater engagement, um, longer retention, and that sort of thing.
Right.
Go ahead.
In terms of um our budget, it, since the tax cap came in.
Mm-hmm.
Right, the, the strategy unfortunately has um often been not replacing full-timers with part.
Right, especially if somebody retires and they're carrying their health benefits with them. Yeah, so that, this is our challenge. It's a, it's definitely not an easy, it's very easy to say we're going to do this. The reality is different. However, we've been very, you know, we have been able to um be creative about um having full-time positions recently. You know, we recently combined a few vacancies to be able to make a current staff, part-time staff member full-time. That happened uh last August. And then we were able to um combine a couple of vacant positions, a few vacant positions um to allow us to hire a full-time head of adult services, which we didn't have for a long time. So there are ways to do it. It's not easy, but there are ways to do it.
Right, but we're really hamstrung by the tax cap, too.
Absolutely, absolutely. And those are conversations that I have with the staff. Um, you know, it's very easy to say, we'll just combine two part-time positions and make a full-time position. And then my question is, and, and I, and I also have to find the funds for the health insurance for that position, too. And that's fair, that's very expensive. Those are open conversations.
Right, right. So we just have to recognize um it's difficult to, there's, there's a lot of emphasis on wanting to bring in more people full-time. That was a definitely clear um reinforced ask throughout the, um, throughout the process. But um, it's difficult for us in light of the tax cap and um in terms of medical benefits. That's the challenge, unfortunately, that we've been facing and juggling for the past, it's probably ten years at this point, that the tax cap is around.
Yes, yes. And it was a challenge before the tax cap, too. Because when you have somebody retire and carry their health benefits with them, it's not like you're filling a one-for-one. You have to find the extra money to create that position.
Right, but, but um we did not have tax caps at that point, so we had more flexibility.
No, but I can tell you, you know, when I worked in a, when I worked previous to the tax cap, it was still a challenge because we, you know, we didn't want to raise our budget by huge amounts of percentage points. And I don't think we would want to do that now, even if we didn't have a tax gap.
I, I would just add, that is all more the reason why your plan has to have a component in it relative to diversifying your revenue streams.
Right.
You had that conversation, but you had nothing in your plan saying, we need to diversify. Then it would be not as impactful a plan because you're not addressing a real need. You need, you need to have the flexibility and the only way you get this is by, by looking for ways to increase. So I think that's, that's not an answer in and of itself, but it makes for a more sound plan that you're saying, yes, we want this, but we recognize we gotta, we gotta get more funds to do that.
Right, and, and clearly having a foundation to help raise funds and the strategy of grant writing and perhaps hiring someone as we tried to do several years ago, but it just, you know, we have not been able to add that position into our budget. But that's probably the best investment we could make as an organization in terms of bringing in significant funds would be a grant writer.
Right, and that allows for you to celebrate when you get to those milestones. When you get the wrong revenue to do that, that presents a real good opportunity and to you, in the second year of plan to say, yes, we're celebrating this because we were able to do this in order to do that. So.
Right.
My, my point is just that you have a plan that supports the different components.
Are we familiar with how many um libraries across the county and across the state have grant writers? Is that data that we have access to?
Um, it, there's, there's no, there's no like central repository of that data, but it's something that I can put out to the list. Though I will say, um, Mallory has been certified in grant writing and the intention is to have her uh work on more grant writing going forward. And she's already been doing that for us.
Right. And as a board member, I'm happy to assist with that because that's sort of where my expertise lies.
Are there any other questions um before we move on to the next pillar?
Did you come up with all six of these pillars with the group?
The group came up with them.
It's great.
Yeah. It was a great experience. It was a great group. Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Okay, um, Mallory, this one's yours, I think.
I think so. Um, this didn't have very many um large changes from the last iteration of the plan. Um, the one thing that we did add under tactics and actions was that we would initiate efforts to conduct community focus groups with organizations um regarding working with them going forward, what they need from us, what we can do for them. Um, kind of the conversations that we had been hoping to have as we did the plan, um, but we ran out of runway there. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's the only significant change on this slide.
Yes, yeah.
That um Excel sheet of organizations.
Say the first part of that again, Alice, I'm sorry.
This is um actually the pillar that you generated, that list of community organizations for.
Yes, yeah.
And, and, and then that's, speaks to the wording of the overarching goal. It may sound hokey to people, but it really is. Relationships that you want deeper and lasting relationships, they don't happen unless you really continuously build on them. You continuously seed that soil of that relationship. And then the harvest that's spoken to is the harvest that's not only beneficial for the library, but it's actually beneficial for the entire Austining community and surrounding community because the harvest is more connections, more relationships, more. And I think this is one of the things that Matt really likes about the plan. It really propels the library into a place of leadership about changing who we are and where, where we live and how we treat each other.
Well, Mallory, at the um, the last long-range plan, um, several years ago, I remember you talking about wanting um people to have FOMO, the fear of missing out at what was going on at the library, right? And that very much sort of feeds into this, that everybody is interconnected and, you know, people who are coaches and um whatever. E- everybody should see, see that they have a place at the table at the library, that we're a can, a community convener.
Absolutely. Are there any questions about this pillar before we move on?
Just, just one comment, if I may, is including the non-library users, I think was, is a great idea.
That was a change, Jonathan. Thank you so much for pointing that out. We missed that one, yes. Um.
And that came from staff conversations, the feedback that we had with the departments. Um, it's the age-old question about how do you tell people who don't know what we're doing, what we're doing? And so part of the plan is doing more um purposeful outreach to the community who doesn't already use the library.
And number four also um was something that came out of the staff, um, staff meetings and presentations, um, that they would be empowered to help us pursue groups that they have relationships with, that, you know, part-time or full-time, they could be library advocates and help us make the connection.
Well, many of our part-timers probably have s- stronger connections to some of these organizations than our full-timers because they have more time to be involved in the community.
Any questions before we move on? Any more questions? Or comments? Okay, Mallory, we'll go on to the next one. Molly, this is, this is your baby.
This is me. Um, the overarching goal of our physical and virtual infrastructure transformation is to continue the library's evolution toward becoming your library of the future. We want everyone using the library to think of it as their library. Uh, some minor changes in terms of wording. Um, we do, in terms of talking to staff and getting feedback, we do want to make sure that we're um implementing recurring training uh so that everybody's skills are, and competencies are continuously enhanced. We know that um the digital workplace and landscape is changing very quickly and staff reminded us that, you know, one training here, there wasn't enough, that a lot of them needed continuous training. Um, of course, there's a comment about our lovely HVAC system and moving on to Phase Two. Um, we do want to continue to revisit and evaluate um space reconfiguration. Again, things change so quickly that what might work um in one year uh is out the window in the next year. So we have to remain flexible and continue to revisit. Uh, some of the tactics that um we reviewed, um, most of them remained the same, but we did get some staff feedback. They um really hoped that we were going to continue to evaluate service desk locations and staffing at service points so that um there was a real focus on efficiency and making things easy for our patrons. And we also wanted to evaluate staff workstations, their software equipment, uh, things that would help them enhance their productivity. And I think I got the highlights there. Karen?
I think you did, Molly.
Okay.
And by the way, in terms of staff development, um, I know we've always wanted, we continue to want to increase our hours, but having that Wednesday morning, um, it's provided you with opportunities to do staff development. Karen, and I believe that you have utilized it more than any other director ever did. And it's my impression that when you do do staff development, it is received very well. So the more we do, the more we build up the um the morale and the competencies and build into some of these other pillars of moving people from part-time into full-time and, and stuff like that. So it's also interconnected.
Yeah, yeah, and we're very, very lucky that we have a staff who is interested in staff development. Um, there's a, you know, i- it's very nice. It's very nice to have a staff who want to learn, who want to um be involved.
And who are open to talking about um the ways that, how they present service. You know, could be considered and, uh, considered for changing. Um, that they brought that up themselves because it's, it's easy to want things to stay the same, stay seated at the same desk with the same assignment. But um our staff is showing a real desire for um flexibility, new opportunities, and better ways to serve our patrons.
And the pandemic, actually, there haven't been many silver linings, but one of them is um the adaptability to virtual.
Mm-hmm.
And providing that opportunity to so many people and expanding, in fact, our outreach programs, right? And, and wanting to continue that modality as a way of outreach and a way of training as well.
Yeah. Yeah, it certainly makes training a lot easier in many respects and allows us to offer more training opportunities for staff, which is really nice.
I, I would say that this is a, this is, there are six pillars, but this is really like three crammed into one. This is a, a very broad um substantive.
This is a big one. And I really like the fact that we combined, a- and this, this happened early on and it wa-, it came out of a lot of discussion with, at the committee level, um, that we combined the, the physical and the virtual infrastructure. It's sometimes easy to get trapped into the building and then technology's over here, but the two sort of knitted together, I think is really, really nice, a nice way to think about it.
I think that is one of the things that COVID helped um progress more quickly was that uh not only training opportunities and other virtual programming, but the quality of those things became um so much better. The resources became so much better um very quickly, probably driven um much faster with COVID than they would have been otherwise.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, Mallory, could you go to the next slide?
Sure.
Which I think is yours.
This is mine. So we went from the really broad um infrastructure transformation to the very niche Mallory pillar, um, which is Brandon Image. Um, we made a few changes here, um, starting with Goal Number Two. Um, we reworded it to um expand it a little bit. So now it reads, update all marketing materials and recurring communications, making sure that all relevant communications are available in several languages, including English and Spanish. Um, that was a suggestion that came from Francine Vernon during our committee discussions and some of her feedback, which was really great. So we wanted to work that in there.
That has actually not been the case, that all of our stuff was offered bilaterally?
We've been offering more and more bilaterally, but not as much as we would like to be.
Oh, okay.
Um, so we're taking a longstanding goal and really making it concrete and holding our feet to the fire with it. Um, and then also being aware of other languages in the community who might be in need of translation services for outreach materials, so that's something for us to keep in mind as well.
Because at the open, I mean, everything has been bilingual for quite a while. Like every single communication must be offered in both languages. I, I assume that was what we were doing, like with our, certainly with our children's programming, it's been bilingual, hasn't it?
Yeah, all of our children's programming materials has been bilingual for a while.
But our app services probably were not because we didn't have the capacity because Molly was doing like four jobs.
Well, and also, um, we, you know, we have been, our, our email newsletter has been evolving. Our social media has been evolving. Our program content in and of itself has been evolving.
And now there's this ability to just like click it and it gets translated, but then we need somebody to check it, right? check it, right?
Right. You can't always trust the translations that are automatic.
Right. And there are idioms and things like that that need to be.
Right.
When it comes to languages, nuance, understanding nuances are very important. And we don't want to have anything in the, in, in, in the effort to do that, that then would contradict our plan. As somebody says, we're welcoming and having everybody feel like this is their library and it's the library of the future. And we translate something into something that says the opposite, then we have, we have an unintended consequence. So yes, that's very important that we understand that.
Right, like we're in the process right now of coming up with a parent campaign called Grown Ups Show Up. And translating it from English to Spanish has proved to be very, very complicated because we're talking about helping you create the best version, helping your child to become the best version of themselves. And that's a very difficult thing to translate, we found. But we'll be doing more of this in the library, which is great. Especially with, like in our adult services, because Molly, you were, you were doing like five jobs, right? So it's, now you have like the big fat pillar.
It was only, it was only three.
Okay. But this, this is important for our branding image. Very important.
Absolutely. And, and we, in a related tactic in action, we added, assess the most recent census data to determine in which languages library materials should be published. And so if it turns out there's a real need for French translations, we might not know that until we look at public information about it. So that's something that we're going to be doing also. Rewinding to goal number three, we, we reworded that here, so it now reads, refresh interior to be more welcoming, inspirational, and comfortable. And that's something that Molly has taken the lead on and gotten a real head start on. We've started executing a lot of that already, which is great. And then two more changes. Tactic action number five, this is also something that came out of conversations with the staff. Evaluate the effectiveness of direct mailing opportunities to the community and informing them of programs and services. That's something that came up in a couple of different department meetings, doing a mass mailing to let people know, hey, these are ours, this is what we're doing. So that's something we're going to be looking into going forward. And then the last tactic action, assess all signage for ease and efficiency of wayfinding. That also came out of staff meetings to make sure that the signage that we have in the building gets people to where they need to go quickly, easily, and with no confusion.
Do not overlook the exterior signage. I don't know the last time the signage for the library's location in the village and the town has been assessed.
Are there any questions or comments about this pillar before we move ahead? We're almost at the end.
I had something. This is more, I guess, of a, a great thing, a good thing. And maybe it can be explained more, like, you know, and Mallory will probably know this, how Google will translate sometimes automatically in your language. Sometimes when you go to the page, I don't know if everyone knows that. So I know while maybe trying to get the other languages fully transposed or everything, maybe just reminding or letting someone know that if you have certain settings with your Google, it will go to that language automatically, certain pages. So I don't know if that's something that, you know, I know we won't be able to translate every language. If someone has that, that maybe, I guess, activated on your phone, I guess you have to activate it. But then they would be able to see it, you know, at least for now, while we add more languages.
That's a great idea. We're, we have the ability to make little instructional videos that we can put on our website or that Mallory can share out by social media or, you know, whatever. And that's a nice little training thing that we can share, make sure people are aware of.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Okay, anything else before we move on? All right, Mallory.
Yes, I have a question, Karen. Mallory, when you talk about looking at the census data to determine, you know, which, which languages are spoken. Over 20 years ago, it was discovered that the Spanish-speaking population in Austin, in fact, were not Spanish reading and Spanish writing. So I'm interested in finding out what information or where would you find out whether that, whether that has changed? And, and if it has changed, how did it change?
I can tell you from my perspective, Shondi, what I would do to try to find that out. Although the, you know, I haven't seen the census results yet. I'm not, I would have to look and see what they would have available when we get to that time. The thing that I tend to do is reach out to the school district and our community organizations because they often have much more recent data on that kind of thing. So for instance, when I wanted to know what were the top languages spoken at home in Austin, I was able to get that information from the school district. You know, oftentimes I'll reach out to Neighbor's Link, who I think would probably be the organization I would reach out to first to answer, to try to answer that particular question.
And also, Spanish too.
And Austin Padres Spanish, yeah.
The reason, the reason why I'm saying that, but that's still talking about, you're still talking about someone's verbal language and not their written or reading language, which they may not have. And so, you know, how would the library then approach? Because in my opinion, the school district was never good at taking that information and working with people unless they were working with them one-on-one or in small groups, actually, again, speaking to them, not sending them something in writing or, you know, depending on them to read the language that they speak. And so, you know, just, just curiosity and maybe a challenge, you know, for the library.
Yeah, that, that was a major issue when I was working in San Antonio. And it did drive us, especially when we were doing community outreach around new branch libraries. It was very much a face-to-face contact. It was, you know, setting up tables in grocery store parking lots. It was, it was just a lot of face-to-face conversations with people. Very time-consuming and demanding, but there was no way around it. We had to do it that way. And I think we have an opportunity again to do that in Austin, meet people where they are and have conversations with them.
I think that's a really good point, Shondi. Thank you. More research for us to do, which is good. Any other questions? The, the next two slides remain fairly similar to what they were. The time, Michael updated our timeline for us. Thank you, Michael, to show that, well, the June 14th board meeting was rescheduled, but apart from that, this is the timeline that we followed. And Mallory, if you could go on to the next slide. Our charter and purpose as a committee has remained the same throughout the entire process. Mallory, could you go on to the next slide, please? And that's it? Are there any questions? Overall, I, I, I want to say, well, I should, I should ask for the questions and not immediately say something else. Are there any questions before I say my something else?
Karen, I don't have a question, just to comment. And that is, I really thought that as a committee, we were working so hard and diligently on this project. But when I look at what the staff has brought to the entire picture, I mean, I am so impressed. And I really feel like the, you, the administration, the librarians, the entire staff have really brought this to a level that far exceeded anything that I had imagined where we would be at this point. And congratulations to you and to everyone else. It really is a strategic plan that reflects the community of the library.
I think it's Amanda.
Now the hard work begins.
That's right. The hard work already started.
Actually, it's, it's really remarkable what's been accomplished in less than six months.
Yeah, we were really, we worked really hard, I have to say. Those are the things I wanted to say. And Mallory, you can stop sharing your screen, whatever you want. The committee has been really wonderful. It's been great to work with them. It was really nice that we had community members on the committee, board members and staff all working together. That was great. And I also want to thank the board so much, first of all, for your vision in doing a long-range plan this way. I think that this, this was a great experience. And I'm so proud of us that we didn't just decide to do the same old, same old long-range plan. We did something that was different. And I also want to thank the board for allowing us to engage Michael. He is more amazing than I can even say. And it's been a, just a wonderful, wonderful experience.
Now we have to get the funding to make all this happen.
There is, there is a resolution on our agenda. So while we have this, this feeling, this sentiment, we'll, we'll consider resolution 101, which reads, approval of proposed 2021 long-range strategic plan. Resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the proposed 2021 long-range strategic plan dated June 14, 2021. If there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept this resolution in a second. We have a motion from Alice, and I have a second. Thank you. And all those in favor of resolution 101, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Are there any abstentions or objections? And there being none, it carries 5-0. Congratulations, everyone, and a job well done.
Thank you. Can I, can I just speak up about next steps? So you all received a very, very draft version of the, the public portion, I guess you could call it, of the plan, which will include narrative and context. So when we put it out there, somebody who isn't being walked through the plan like we did tonight can appreciate it as well as translate it. It needs to be translated into Spanish. So we'll be working on that going forward.
Great.
Thank you so much, Michael.
Well, you're welcome. It was a joy working with all of you and the committee. The devil is in the detail now, the execution. I, I am, I will remind the board, glad you had the resolution. But some of the work has already started, and hopefully the momentum will continue. And I think what you have is a way for the staff to continue their engagement, which will make the plan more powerful. So moving forward, I expect that you will be having some great celebrations in the next six months, in the next nine months, in the next 12 months, because you actually will be achieving outcomes from the plan. What you won't get right away, and so you have to be patient with yourselves, is what the longer-term results and impacts will be. You already started the day in the life, or did you know that was something that we started? And it's actually going on and it's being informed. You have a day in the life, you have the interior spaces. So you've actually started doing work on the plan, which, again, to your point, Alice, we started, we actually engaged contractually in January, and now we're sitting here in June. And, and we, and we had a hybrid along the way, because remember, the initial engagement was, we engaged Michael initially, and then Karen and Molly go off and write the plan. We actually wrote the plan as we went. So we, we were flexible. And I think that's, that, that, that was a good way to get here as opposed to gathering all this information, dumping it on Karen and Molly, and say, go ahead and write it.
Michael, will you continue with us through the implementation process?
Well, that's up for a conversation that Karen and I have on the agenda to talk about. So, but, but through this month, I will be continuing to work directly with Karen, Molly, and Mallory. So the short answer to the question is through the end of this month, yes. But beyond that, we're, we're, we're working, we're talking through my ongoing connection.
Right, because so much of the staff development and stuff you would be tremendously helpful.
Yeah. So Karen and I are in discussions with them, and she'll probably come back to the board to say, here's what that would look like. But in the meantime, I'm a friend of the Austin Public Library, and Karen, Molly, and Mallory are going to host me now that we are all vaccinated and all that good stuff. So I am coming to the library at some point for this.
We are so excited about that.
You have not been in person, Michael?
I have not been in person. We gotta get, we gotta have that happen so I can actually see.
Yep.
You should not have admitted that.
No, it's, it's a work in progress, Matt.
You know, it's actually, I've been a part of so many long-range plan processes. And I can't believe how much you accomplished in such a short amount of time. I know it was a Herculean lift and that there was, for the board members who were, Amanda, you had just said, you guys thought that you were super involved, but then you realized, like, from this, this thing that Molly, I mean, that, that, you know, was attached to our board email, the, the feedback and commentary from the staff. You guys did a tremendous, tremendous amount of work in such a short amount of time.
Now, Matt, you should know, I've been in Austin and I've driven around the library. I just haven't gone in the building. So let me just make sure I clarify something.
That, that's good to hear. I think that was the day we closed the library.
Right, right. So I, I, I would, I would not be a good, good provider of service if I didn't visit, but I couldn't actually go in. That's, that, so let me just clarify. I haven't had a chance to sit down with Molly, Karen personally.
No, you're very, you're very good natured about it. We appreciate it.
We were staying true to the protocols. But we, we will make that happen. In the meantime, again, it's been an absolute pleasure. I think you got a real good product. And Matt, you had asked me a question in terms of using the information. I think you're going to be able to share this. But what's most exciting is that the Austin Public Library, that branding part, that last, you're going to brand yourself even more so. You're going to continue to win awards as the best library in Westchester County. But that's going to come with some extra kudos around leadership and helping others to see how, how can, how can an organization truly committed to diversity, equity, inclusion lead? That's, that's the exciting thing that that's going to happen. And along the way, as Karen experienced, some people will challenge you with questions, but that, that to me means your plan is working. When people say, oh, I don't know if this is what I signed on for, that opens the door for those courageous conversations. And I feel confident that Karen, Molly, and Mallory, and the rest of the staff, a good portion of them are going to be prepared to have those conversations.
This is hard work. And Amanda and Shondi know from the schools, this is, this is hard work. And it's, it, actually, you, you, you've gotten the plan together in a very quick pace. But this work of change is often at a glacial pace because it's, it's, it's relationship building, it's trust building, it's having the right people involved to help with the staff development so that people don't build up defenses and feel that they're being asked to do things that they're not comfortable doing.
And, and Karen also has, she'll reveal this when she's ready, but she also has a draft of leadership values and behavior. So you actually have a way, if you recall, we had a few meetings back, so yes, we got the plan. But what does it look like in terms of how we behave? Will we actually have a document that says, this is what the leadership behavior looks like when you're, when you truly are being inclusive?
Jonathan, has any other library done the long-range plan from this lens before in Westchester?
Not, not that I know of. Not that I know of. It's impressive, absolutely. And the work involved by, by all parties. The, the staff, the, the leadership of the library, the, the board
The uh, the staff, the, the uh, leadership of the library, the, the board members and uh, uh led by um, you know, the, the group there. And I think that seems, that's probably the key word, is it's a group effort. And it's hard work. I mean, I've, it's just sort of seen this as it's progressed from uh the very beginning when Michael came and his insight and uh, and expertise. And I think the fact that it was, in some ways, s- smart to discuss it, which is the hard work, but also to be writing as you go, because, you know, here's, here's, it's like, here's all the data, go, go put it in a narrative now. And I, I think you, you lose things in translation that way. And I think this way, you not only were able to um, to put it down uh in a, in a graphic and, and, and words, but you also were, you were editing and improving as you went along.
Yeah, creating those six pillars really was
Yeah.
great way to sort of sort everything. It was, it's really a great structure.
Yes, I'm, absolutely. It'd be, it'd be interesting to, you know, I'll be, I'll be looking around for other uh, um, you know, type of strategic long, you know, long-range plans that are anywhere similar, similar to this, which I, um, but, and I'm sure this will be uh certainly on the top group. Well, it's impressive.
Again, that is my pleasure. Looking forward to it. Karen, Molly and Molly, I'm not sure if ours, we're still gonna keep our schedule for Friday. It's still on my calendar. So we should probably wrap up and go back into those next couple of meetings to really accelerate around the execution pieces. Okay?
Hope to see more of you, Michael.
Well, I'll be here. I'll leave it up to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
For engaging me. And for anyone, you have my contact information uh as well as it, it is always important for someone like me and my, as an entrepreneur, to have testimonials. So for those of you who would like to write anything that I can put on my website and put on my social media, don't hesitate. I would welcome them. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too, Michael.
Michael, good night.
So that was a terrific experience so far and hope, hopefully we'll be able to execute and uh have more success. And we're at the point now, Karen, if perhaps you're ready with the director's report, personnel report.
Sure. I am ready. Um, I'm gonna try to keep it brief because I know that we've um, we're all probably tired. Um, I just wanted to update you all. We are closing out the boiler installation. Hallelujah. Um, Molly and the team had a closeout meeting, uh, the other day, a virtual closeout meeting. And then um, the engineering team from OLA and Clean Air will be having a onsite closeout meeting. Molly, that's this Friday, correct? This Friday. So we're essentially finishing.
This Friday, eight AM.
You'll all be thrilled to hear that we are finishing the punch list. So there will be hopefully no open items left um to haunt us on this one.
And hopefully no one will, no one will actually punch anyone.
No.
A document in our email about like over expenditures and stuff related to this project.
Was that Bob's addendum to the financials?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, he puts that in each financial. We essentially expend, we expended out the grant money um and then received the grant money. And we didn't reflect it at all in our general operating budget.
No, it was a, it was a written document, not an Excel sheet.
No, no, no. He, there was a follow-up to his Excel sheet. He always writes a little, a little explanation as to where we're over, where we're under. But it was, it was entirely expected. And we're not, we're not over budget in the project at all.
Is this an opportunity to bring in Sandy Galiff and or anyone else that was involved?
Yes, uh Mallory and I have already talked about doing an invite, combining the, the Boiler Project, which is a state grant, and also the Security Camera slash Panic Button slash Employee Access, et cetera, grant, which is also the paperwork of that, as well as the work is wrapping up. So we'll do that as like um a two-for-one type of thing, because they're both the same um grant from the state or the same type of grant from the state. And along those lines, the security stuff has been wrapped up. Um, the work is essentially done. Um, Molly is going to be working on setting up the key fob access for the, the staff or the key fobs for the staff and signing those out. Um, we're having additional training on the security camera, maybe the security camera programs and the access system, but essentially the work is done, thank goodness. And the um, almost final paperwork has been submitted to the state. I am simply waiting on word from DLD um for them, for me to sign off on the, the final, final paperwork for that. And that'll be great. Um, theater carpeting has been installed, as you know, new furniture in the teen room, as you know, which is beautiful. If you happen to be by the library, please drop in and look at both of those things. Um, we are moving quickly ahead on our technology improvements. Um, Allison is on top of that. Um, she's doing a lot of purchasing of technology, all planned, um, but all very fast. And, and there were lots of hiccups because of the computer chip shortage. Um, she would put an order in as we were waiting for the purchase order to be finalized, everything would be gone. Um, so she ended up having to uh do some quick purchasing um with the credit card i- in some cases, but it's, it's going along very nicely. We're anticipating um having all of our own computer equipment up and running by the end of um this year, 2021. We will have a period of time between July 1st um and um December 30, 31st um, in which we're still very, we're still hybrid, but moving along and moving along. Um, we are, I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail than was in my report because there have been some changes. We are really quickly moving ahead with opening up things um when it comes to COVID restrictions. Um, things are moving so fast that we're finding, again, like in the beginning when we had to move really fast, um shutting down, we're having to move a little bit more quickly than we would like, opening up in response to things. We are anticipating having all of our regular hours, summer hours, of course, but regular hours all the same, back in place um by July 6th. Right now, we still have some hours on Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays when we are closed for walk-ins, open for curbside and appointments. So that will be restored um as of July 6th. We are lifting the mask requirement for the public who are vaccinated effective tomorrow. This was um a surprising, quick development that we found necessary to make. Um, as things are opening up, we are finding that our staff at the service desks and the doors, we're having more and more trouble um with patrons justifying the, the mask wearing. And so I was getting a lot of feedback from the staff. Um, I was very hesitant, but um, but we figure, we, we decided we just have to do it. So starting tomorrow, masks for the public are optional if public are vaccinated. We are still going to require masks in the children's room for everybody until further notice. Um, the children's department is meeting about that tomorrow. And the staff are still all required to wear masks um in the public areas of the building when the public are in the building. So if they're working at the circulation desk or if they're Buildings and Grounds member who's in the public, on the public floor, when the public are there, we're asking them to wear their masks. For staff, when staff are working in um shared areas that are behind the scenes, or if they're working in the building before or after hours, before the public are in the building or after, then masks are optional if staff are vaccinated, with the exception of the situation where there is um, um, if a staff member is particularly vulnerable because of health reason, um, they can request that folks still remain masked when they can't social distance from them. And we do have um some folks who are doing that. Um, and everybody's being very respectful of that, which is, which is wonderful. Um, so that's, that's the COVID opening up. We're finding around Westchester, a lot of other libraries are going through the same thing. Um, many libraries are, are making the same decisions that we're making. Um, we have the real advantage, though, because we, we started opening up so very early. Um, we got through a lot of the hard stuff. Um, some of the libraries are still dealing with, with the hard stuff and, and are, are really struggling, but we're in a really nice situation. Um, let's see, we are also in, in regards to that, moving staff back to their regular office spaces um and also bringing people back from work from home, with the exception of special requests, which we are considering. So that's a, that's a, a nice transition that's happening right now. I would like to move on from COVID unless you have any questions about anything that I just said or anything that I might have forgotten to say in, in that regards. Okay, Diana and I are busily interviewing for the full-time librarian two position in the Adult Services Department. This is the position that was left vacant um when Bonnie passed away. We have, uh, we had 11 candidates for the position, nine of whom were qualified for the position, and we have interviewed everybody who was qualified in a first round of interviews. And now we're setting up a second round of interviews. We have, with six candidates, so we have right now six really good viable candidates who we would like to meet with again. We also have to work through the civil service process because whomever we hire needs to be reachable on a civil service list. So some people are on civil service lists and some are not. It's um, it's going to be interesting. But we are committed to take the time that we need to do this right so that we get the right person for the position. We already talked about the long-range plan. Uh, we already talked about the foundation. Um, I just wanted to share with you a couple of additional things from the various reports. Um, where did I flag them? Give me one sec. Oh, we are, we, well, we have rolled out mobile checkout, um, mobile self-checkout, but um we are doing sort of a soft launch with it and then we'll do larger promotions. Mobile self-check, it, it uses the WLS app, so if you have the WLS mobile app on your phone, you can do self-check. It allows patrons to check materials out to themselves while they're in the stacks, um, which is pretty amazing and really exciting. Um, one of, we were hoping to have it available to us sooner. I think it became available sometime in May, I wanna say. Um, because during COVID, it would have been especially nice to have that, that feature available, but we're happy to have it now. And um we're looking forward to more and more patrons using that feature. Uh, and one more thing. Oh, and I just wanted to um mention that the, the teen gardening program has been going, has been starting up again. We work with the Greenberg Nature Center, who've been really great. I just wanted to, to mention them and bring them to your attention. Suzie really enjoys working with them. She says the quality of their programming is excellent and the kids get a, a lot out of it. Are there any questions about my report?
How do you access the mobile app checkout?
You search for the Westchester Library System app on your App Store. And then once you have that app, you put in your library card number so it knows who you are. Once you have that app on the front page of the app, the mobile checkout is a possibility for you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. The uh, the next item is uh the committee reports, the president's report. I want to bring to everyone's attention, the July meeting will be very interesting because we have the reorganization meeting, which includes the election of officers. So one of the uh things that'll happen is there'll be nominations for board officers. That includes the president, the vice president and the secretary. And there, nobody has a claim for any of those positions. So you, each of you is encouraged to consider taking on one of those roles. In addition, the newly elected trustees, even re-elected trustees, will take the oath of office for their new term. And uh, it's a nomination of board officers, election board officers, and that's the key part of the meeting. So please consider that as an opportunity that you are asked to take advantage of. Any questions or comments regarding that? I would also like to undertake a summer reading program of the book Cast by Isabel Wickelson. And I thought perhaps we could do half of the book in July and half of the book in August. But I'm, I'm not a good moderator. And uh, I was hoping that I could ask someone to take that on um because I don't know how to assign reading segments or to um, mom, to chair a discussion on it. So I will entertain anyone's suggestions for that and we can talk about that um sometime later this week, perhaps. But uh, if forced to, I will, I will manage, but I would appreciate help on that. And that is the extent of my report. If there are no additional questions or comments, we'll move on to the policy and bylaws and personnel.
Can I just jump in real quick, Matt? I just wanna, thank you. Um, I do have copies of Cast, hardcover copies of Cast. If anybody needs it or would like it, please just let me know and I will put one aside for you on the hold shelf.
Amanda, anything under the personnel policies and statutes?
No news to report.
Alrighty. Um, is there anything on the finance committee at this time? No, okay.
Nothing to report.
And buildings and grounds. Um, I've been in the building a number of times in the past couple of weeks. The temperatures seem to be okay. Am I, is that accurate?
Currently, at this time, it is accurate.
Great. That's great. And uh, we don't, I don't think there's anything else, uh Karen, that we haven't already touched regarding buildings and grounds? Anything in addition?
No, no. I'm going to ask that the committee start meeting again um to sort of pick up where we left off, but nothing, nothing at this point.
Great, great. So at this time, we can uh bring up the annual report on the new business. There's a resolution to accept the 2019, 2020 annual report. Um, Karen, is there an overview perhaps? I know we will receive it. And I have actually looked for it for any insight or surprises or things that we can add in the context of our strategic plan, but frankly, I didn't find any.
Well, normally I'm able to give you a lovely spreadsheet and an executive summary that talks about um, that looks at the, the library statistics over the course of several years and trends and things like that, but I have to put that together for you still.
Okay.
Um, I will say that it was, it was a challenge putting together this year's annual report because of the way that we're doing our business and because of the way the state was asking us to count things. So you'll see for the program statistics, for instance, um, it, it's sort of strange. They wanted us to count the attendance and the programs, um, the numbers for programs that were live and in person or live and virtual, but not recorded. Um, not only recorded. If they were only recorded, then we didn't count those, but they didn't define how to count. So we were left to figure it up, figure it out by ourselves. We looked at views in the period of time, I think 48 hour, within 48 hours of the posting of the program. But, you know, it's anybody's guess how they were looking for us to count those things. We did our best, is what I can say.
Okay. Um, if there are no other questions or comments, we do have a resolution regarding the annual report. And it reads resolved, this is Resolution 99 at the bottom of the first page of the agenda. It re, it reads resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the 2020 annual report. Now, if there are no additional, there are no additional questions or comments, entertain a motion to accept Resolution 99 in a second so we can vote on it. And we have Amanda for the motion and a second from Shanti. Thank you. All those in favor of accepting Resolution 99, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. And are there any objections or abstentions at this time? There being none, it carries five zero. And there is one more resolution, number 100. It's a personnel change. Um, a library clerk part-time is taking leave of absence. So does that mean it's a resignation, Karen?
She had, she was on a leave of absence and she has since resigned.
Okay, all right. If there are no questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion in a second for Resolution 100, the personnel change. And we have a motion from Shanti and a second from Amanda. Thank you. All those in favor of accepting Resolution 100, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any abstentions or objections? If there being none, it carries five zero. And we have completed the agenda, but Jonathan, before we go, we'd like to give you an opportunity for any additional comments or observations tonight.
I think um I'm all set. I thank you very much. You've had a I think I'm all set. I thank you very much. You've had a very busy, active, but productive meeting.
Thank you.
And I will say, good night.
Good night, Jonathan.
Take care. Enjoy. And all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Karen, we didn't, I don't recall, was there anything for exec at this time?
There's, there's something that will, that possibly will come up, but I don't feel I have enough information right now.
But I'll take that as a no.
That's a no.
Okay, if there are no additional questions or any other subjects that need to be brought up at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn and a second. And, oh, Alice, that was fast. And Shanti, thank you. All those in favor of moving to adjourn, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. No, Mike, Matthew, I just had a comment about something, a quick comment. I was trying to get, you know, hit the button for, so I could speak. I just wanted to make a comment in regard to, you know, the work product that, you know, the library staff and, and board members and Michael have produced for the library, that I think that it's something that should not be shared. And that, you know, if someone wants to do this kind of work, that Michael is certainly a resource in that regard. But for those who are other groups that are in the community, that this is something that they're working on, or something that they want to do, I think it's important not to get it confused that the, the product that was produced here can be shared, and they will be successful in doing whatever it is that they're doing.
Yeah, this is clearly a customized project
Yeah.
and product for our brand. But that's a point we'll take.
And our, and our intent is to put together a public document
Right, right.
that will be shared.
Great. So we have a unanimous vote to adjourn. Everyone, please stay well and stay safe. And I look forward to seeing you all very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.